All right, good evening. Welcome to the Anacortes City Council Meeting of 8 July 2024. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Franciac, take the role, please.
Mr. Fantini.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougall.
Here.
Ms. Hubick.
Here.
Thank you.
Do you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, all ready to item three, announcements and committee reports. Couple of announcements. Just like to thank everyone who came out to celebrate the Fourth with us. It was a beautiful day, wonderful parade, followed by a push-in ceremony at for truck 29 at the fire station. So thanks again to all the staff, Parks Rec, Public Works, for making sure the parade's safe. And always a special thank you to Sylvia Cooper, who takes on this additional responsibility in addition to her duties at the wastewater treatment plant to coordinate this parade and making it smooth. Also like to thank the Vikings of VAQ 129, the Fleet Replacement Squadron for their flyover. And then the Parks Foundation for fundraising efforts for a spectacular Fourth of July parade and the Fire Department keeping us all safe. And happy to report there were no fireworks-related fires in the city this year. That's always good. Thanks Port of Anacortes for the Rock the Dock Celebration. I know the crowd was all there to listen to me talk about the Fourth of July or to see the rock band. So thanks for the port and all those who came out. Like to also announce the winners. If you didn't hear, that's what I did at the Rock the Dock, announced the winners for the parade. Best float, third place, the Merman of Anacortes and VSC Fence, they tied. Second place, the Salish Sea School. I was impressed to see them in the plastic suits and steaming up inside. And then first place was the Anacortes Rotary with a live band. Then for the marching group, third place, Twisted Pixies. Second place, Oars Old Anacortes Rowing and Sailing Club. And first place, the Skagit Latin Horses Association. So great time by all. And another coming this Saturday, July 13th, Storvik Park, 10 to 2. Since 1990, the Kids Are Best Fest has been hosting a free event for children of Anacortes. The activities, games, live entertainment, and fun for the whole family. Look forward to seeing you all there. And then a couple more. Tommy Thompson Trestle is currently closed and will be closed this week so crews can complete geotechnical work on the trail. Our goal is to complete this work by Friday so we can reopen it for the weekend. So for commuters who use the trail, the Tommy Thompson Trestle, appreciate your patience till we complete the work. And then a reminder, Monday, council meeting is a study session and it'll start at 5:00 PM. So council have a study session in lieu of regular city council meeting. The study session will focus on development of the 2025 Comprehensive Plan. We'll have a short consent agenda for approval and then there'll be no other action taken at the meeting. Like to thank Mayor Pro Tem Moulton in advance for chairing the meeting as a side job as the Board Chair of Skagit Transit. It'll take me away from that meeting. So that is it for my announcements. Over to Council 3A, Port City Liaison Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
The Port City Liaison Committee met on 7/2. I think that was Tuesday, right? Tuesday. The biggest news coming out of that, of course, was that the Marine Supply and Hardware Building received another report on, I think this is the third report, on the safety of that building. And it was not good, just like the other two reports before it. So I think, as expected, the commission is working with that tenant to close down that building. So that building will be closed. And then eventually, hopefully repurposed with the Anacortes Housing Authority into workforce housing. I know this was expressed in our committee meeting, what a difficult decision that was. And I think sometimes in government, we have to make some unpopular but necessary decisions. Also, they will be memorializing that building and they are working on a plan on how to do that, whether it be saving some of the remnants or possibly creating a book. So there is a plan to memorialize that that building. It is a bit of a trade-off because we are also, with the Olson Building having closed, they anticipate turning that into housing as well and hopefully being able to maintain the facade, the original facade of that building. That is the plan. So there will definitely still be some good historic architecture, hopefully, down down in Old Town there. They also reported back that they received their industrial demand study for the property that's owned by the port, right by the airport. And this was done by E-DASK. And what that report basically went into is what types of buildings could possibly go there, what types of businesses could be attracted to that. And this is a really great step in deciding what they want to do next with it. The mantra at the meeting was if they build it, if we build it, they will come. So that is a good thing to hear from the port. One thing of note is they are strategically not making it aeronautic. So they want it to be disconnected from the airport. So there'll be other types of businesses and industry involved there. City also provided some updates, like the mayor said. The comp plan docketing is coming up. Also, there will be some additional dredging done as we're working on that outfall. There's some discussion around that. And that is going to be an additional cost, but it looks like it is going to be paid by the Department of Ecology and the port. And the reason that they need to do this additional dredging when we start is because with the scope of this project and this ginormous pipe that they're going to be putting in there, it's necessary that once we put it in there, we want to make sure that pipe is protected. So they're going to be looking at doing some additional dredging there. We're just waiting to hear back. But again, paid for through the Department of Ecology and and the port. Also, I thought an interesting note, the mayor provided us at that meeting with some population numbers. And we are up to 18,430 residents in Anacortes. And that is up 250 people from the previous year.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Just to clarify a little bit, because I know that there's been quite a bit of interest in this topic over the weekend. The port owns the Marine Supply and Hardware and Bike Spot Building. The Housing Authority owns the Olson Building, the brick building at the south end of the block. The port has never expressed, I think, the port can speak for itself, but I think it's safe to say the port has never expressed interest in in pursuing workforce housing at all, including on the site of the Marine Supply and Hardware Building. It's the Olson Building that has always been workforce housing. And now that it's under the Housing Authority's ownership, will be workforce housing again. And the people of Anacortes are funding that through our Affordable Housing Sales Tax that we passed back in in 2020. But I didn't want to leave anyone with the impression that the Marine Supply end of the block would be turned into workforce housing because the port has never said anything about that.
Any other questions on the Port City meeting? Okay, next up is the Planning Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. The Planning Committee met at 5:00 PM. Council members Walters, Cleland McGrath, and myself, and planners Libby Grage and Planning Director John Coleman. And we did discuss our work session of next week at 5:00 PM that will take the place of our ordinary city council meeting. And this will be the beginning, the kickoff really, of our comp plan process meeting. So part of this process is that people submit applications for changes to the comp plan update, so things they would like to see moving forward. So we had eight submissions, eight submitters. Some had one amendment, someone had 11 amendments suggested. So those those individuals have been, they are invited to attend the meeting and have a few minutes to speak to council and the public about their submissions. And to read those, Ms. Grage had emailed emailed those to all the city council on July 3rd in the afternoon. So a lot of us probably haven't quite studied them yet. So they are in our email boxes and they can also be found on the planning department page of the city website with all the details there. So we'll have ample time to review them before before they come before us, before the petitioners come before us. So we'll hear the presentations briefly, probably five minutes from each each petitioner. And then Mr. Coleman will give us an overview of the comp plan update process, what we're required to do. And we will also discuss the scope of that, what we want to accomplish in addition to what we're required to do. The consultants will attend remotely, so they'll be here to to answer questions as well and see the, you know, see the direction that we we want to go. And all of the information will be published in the council packet that comes out on Wednesday afternoon. So council will get that. And it's also available online for the public. And then on the 22nd, the following Monday, we'll have a formal public hearing where people will be invited to comment on the amendment requests. And we will discuss as a council what we would like to, which of those requests we would like to move forward to the Planning Commission for consideration. So next week's more kind of the presentation and the following week will be will be more the discussion on those on those requests. After that, we talked a bit about legislation that was adopted in 2023 at the state level about permit review time periods. And there are some new requirements that are coming into play January 1st, 2025. So we talked about getting ahead of those and and what that will look like. So that was the beginning of that conversation and that was it.
Any questions for Planning Committee? Okay, Public Safety Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yep. Councilmember Hubick and I attended the July 2nd Public Safety Meeting. We had Chief Harris there from the Fire Department. Interesting note is that call volume is up about 15% over the previous year, 2023. And the type of requests are spread across kind of all of the different areas. But falls are quite frequent, he pointed out. As of July 1st at 8:00 AM, the second full or the second full-time unit is up and running at Station 1. So thank you for passing the public safety measure. And we've got, we're up to staffing, staffing levels now that we've got two units at Station 1, which is where we saw most of those callouts because of the population. So that's exciting. The EMS levy that was passed more recently, which is countywide, seems to have no real operational changes, but appears that it should work for us and possibly tentatively will increase our funding about $600,000 a year, but still still in those final stages. As we all know, the ladder truck arrived and participated in the the Fourth of July Parade and the push-in. So that was very exciting. And also, we had our 1924 engine that our community has lovingly restored. So it was a 100-year birthday. Pretty pretty awesome. The Fire Department's considering or has submitted for a port security grant for a possible boat. Kind of a long shot, but we're, that's one thing that we would benefit from being on an island. With regards to the Police Department, we had Chief Floyd there along with a few of his officers. Hiring is going well. We've got folks graduating the academy. We've got a couple finishing up field training. We've got one is continuing field training. And we've got our our council member, previous council member, Mr. Carter, is going to join and start training shortly. So that's pretty exciting as one of our newest police officers. The CJTC, which was supposed to be the training facility we were hoping to have closer to us, looks like it's going to be in Arlington, continues to be delayed. It just makes it harder for folks who want to go through that training program to do it near their home. Prosecutor's Office, we've got Ms., our attorney and our police chief going to discuss further the overturning of the, what is it called? I'm going to find it here. The Supreme Court case that has been overturned regarding Grant County and homelessness. So that should be interesting to have more of a discussion on that. Good news is our our school resource officer, Officer Kellington, now that we have staffing levels for the Police Department back up to where they should be, he is able to be out in the forest lands during the summertime, Wednesday through Saturday, about 10:00, 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. So that's super exciting. That was one of those goals that I think council was really adamant wanting to have some presence out in the community, in the forest land. So thank you for getting that done and that's really exciting for for all of us. And then finally, we had a really wonderful presentation from Officers Clifford and Officer Hatchett about a dual-purpose canine team. Our current drug dog, T-Bone, is getting up in his years. And so now is the time to start thinking about if and how we would like to replace him. He's a single purpose because he does drugs, but and he's been on, he's since 2016, he's been deployed 1,199 times. He's assisted other agencies. He's great for public relations. He does the best on Facebook, I believe, out of all the city Facebook pages. And so they did a really amazing proposal for a dual purpose, which means, you know, they not only would that dog be able to locate drug issues, but also locate fleeing suspects, de-escalate situations, less lethal force with that practice of having a dog available. And using tandem with drones. It was a really wonderful presentation. I won't go into all of it, but I told him he's ready for primetime. He's one of the best slides, slide presentations and discussion we had. It was quite thorough. So right now, there is no dual-purpose dog in Skagit County. The closest one is in Bellingham. My understanding is the Sheriff Department is working, is in the process of training one, but it's a really good resource for us to have with all of our forest lands, but also to have available for the the surrounding community. Not much more expensive than having a single-purpose dog, but just worth discussion. So hopefully that comes forward.
Any questions for the Public Safety Committee? All right, any other announcements or committee reports I may have missed? All right, we're going to go on to item 3D. This is a certificate of municipal leadership. Councilmember Carolyn Moulton, and I'm going to read something real quick. Yeah, so city councilmember Carolyn Moulton recently earned a certificate of municipal leadership from the Association of Washington Cities. AWC's certificate of municipal leadership program recognizes city and town elected officials for accomplishing training in five core areas, roles, responsibilities, and legal requirements, public sector resource management, community planning and development, effective local leadership, diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. And then a quote from AWC CEO. Being a city leader in Washington is a complex job, said Deanna Dawson. Through our CML program, we are providing our elected officials with the knowledge they need to effectively operate within the law, plan for the future, secure and manage funds, foster strong relationships, and work to build a more more equitable communities. Carolyn Moulton completed more than 30 hours of training to earn this distinction. And AWC serves its members through advocacy education services. Founded in 1933, AWC is a private nonprofit, nonpartisan corporation that represents Washington's 281 cities and towns before the state legislature, the state executive branch, and with regulatory agencies. AWC also provides training, data, and publications and programs such as AWC Employee Benefit Trust, AWC Risk Management Service Agency, AWC Workers Comp Retro, AWC's Drug and Alcohol Consortium, and AWCGS as a consortium. So congratulations, Councilmember Moulton. And I will present you with the certificate. And you get, you don't have to come up front, but we should come up front and do a picture. All right, that was fun. And now on to item four, which is public comment. And we did receive a written public comment. And I would like to just comment that we are indeed, our police chief does do great proactive policing policing for quality of life. So and that was part of why we're hiring additional police officers, so. But any member of the public that wishes to address the council, anything that is not on our agenda tonight? I don't have anybody signed up, but if somebody wanted to address the council, now's the time. All right, checking online. No raised hands. Okay, consent agenda, item five, items A through D, council.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
Thank you. Make a motion to approve consent agenda items A through D.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hubick, a second by Mr. Young, to approve consent agenda items A through D. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We are on to item six, other business, 6A. 6A is Resolution 3160, authorizing resolution Heart Lake Restoration Grant. This is a discussion item with possible action and Mr. Lunsford will give us the details. Mr. Lunsford.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, ladies and gentlemen. So when we apply to the Recreation Conservation Office, which is our statewide granting office, we need to come before you to get an authorizing resolution, kind of to inform you as our electeds and the public what we are going for. So this is just a grant application. We haven't been awarded anything nor have we finished the process. This is just the application process and part of that process is checking this box and making sure you know what we're doing. So there's a little chance to inform you and the public what we are applying for. As it states, we're applying for a grant to fund some changes at Heart Lake. Mr. Voges is here with me. He's our assistant director and manages the forest lands for the city. And he was part of the program in 2009, 10 that created the Heart Lake Site Plans. That was a community effort. That took a little bit of time to figure out what everyone wanted. So that's what the grant reflects, is what came out of that process about 14 years ago. Okay, so as I said, it's it's to the RCO Recreation Conservation Office, their ALIA Program. It's a request for 49% funding of a $940,000 project. Our local match could come from the Conservation Easement Program, Interest, Earnings, and Donations. So the Conservation Easement Program, as you remember, was created in 1999 and has conserved about 1,800 acres of forest lands. And that's time generous donations from the community. It is an endowment fund. In that endowment fund, that is principal that cannot be spent. So the interest earned from that is available to be spent for forest lands purposes. That's about $390,000. I'd have to check with Mr. Hogan, but about that. We could also ask for local donations from our friends at the Parks Foundations, et cetera, to get us to the roughly $480,000 we would need. That's one option. The project follows the elements of the proposed 2009-10 Heart Lake Site Plan, which includes replanting approximately 16,000 square feet of gravel with native plants. If you haven't been to Heart Lake, it is about, hmm, 60,000 square feet of gravel, about 40,000 of which is right along the shoreline. Our goal is to change that a bit, to replant it, to do some other things, which I'll list out for you. We'd like to grade and pave a section so that runoff can be designated back to a swale and be treated before it enters the lake. Now, it all just runs into the lake, which we know has added to our phosphorus loading problems, which adds to our algae problems. So this would be a way of not only taking all the things from the vehicles, but directing them back and treating and the phosphorus that's running into the lake. We would move the kind of derelict boat launch we have to another section. And with that, we would add ADA parking and accessible float or dock to go alongside the launch. That would give us greater mobility access there and greater access to the water in general. And it kind of looks like this. This is just a concept. So with the RCO grant, you don't have to follow this map exactly. This is a concept. You you submit the elements. So our elements would be repaving a certain section, replanting certain sections, adding a boat launch, adding a dock, making accessible pathways. So this is not what we're going to build. This is close to what we will build, but it's not done. So the public needs to know that. What we, when it is done, we'll probably have more meetings like we did in 2009, 10, get more input from the public, right? We'll have to go for some substantial permitting to do this project because it's all along the shorelines in a critical area. So there'll be plenty of chances to weigh in. This is not the be-all, end-all by any means. So what I'm asking you to do tonight, if you would like to ask me questions, please do, is to pass the resolution before you so I can apply for the grant with the hopes that we would receive the funding and could do this work. So it it goes, as Ms. Hubick knows and you all know, it goes, if we are successful, we get into the RCO's list of projects and then it goes to the state legislature. If their funding is normal, they approve the budget as presented by the RCO, then we would find out next July around this time whether we were successful or not. Any questions? I'm happy to do my best to answer them.
Any member of the public wish to address the council on this topic? Council questions for Mr. Lunsford.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I think this is a nice-looking plan. I will be impressed if you're able to pull it off for the amount.
So am I.
You're asking for there. I do think that the community would be willing to make donations in support of this project and not exclusively the Parks Foundation, although maybe they would like to be the vehicle. But I, you know, had some conversations with people even just today, who are looking for opportunities to donate to the parks and forest lands. So I think there's some potential there. The resolution in front of us doesn't really just, the text of the resolution itself doesn't describe the project at all. And I think ideally it would next time, maybe, just so that we know and we have memorialized.
I'm sorry, the resolution the city is passing, not the template that they give to us.
Right.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, the resolution could have a recital saying.
Sure, sure.
We're doing this, this, that, which is in the cover sheet. It's just the cover sheet doesn't really become part of the adopting document.
Sure, thank you.
So that would be the only comment I would have for the future. Otherwise, I think it it looks great and really hope that we are able to get this. And if not, you know, we should queue it up to figure out some other way to do it.
I agree. Thank you. Yep.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lunsford, for this presentation. This is a project that I've been excited about and kind of waiting to see move forward for a long time. And I appreciate that you let us know that this was coming in your last two monthly updates. So we had a heads up on this. So that was great, too. So I know that plan's not final. It did look like there's some parking where there currently, where there's currently some forest, but that's just a mock-up and we have no idea really what it's going to look like and.
Right, right. Right, no, our goal is to not chop down trees. So there, you know, we could bring up the exit road up currently where the current bathrooms are. We lost, we believe we lost a bathroom in the Fourth of July fireworks testing that some citizens do. And so one of our porta-potties or one of our outhouses is down and may be unsalvageable. So but in that zones where we would probably bring the exit road through, and that wouldn't really negate, I mean, wouldn't really include any any tree, tree damage or tree cutting. That's our goal. So that'll be all part of the public's ability to comment as we bring plans forward. So we want to make sure they have that option. Thank you.
Great, yeah. I think this is a project that so many people would appreciate for so many reasons, and to hear about preventing the phosphorus in the lake and just all that runoff. And I mean, it's it's just a win all around. So I'm definitely in support.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Thank you. No, you know, again, Mr. Lunsford, you know, the depth of thought, the presentation addresses all of the issues that would come up and, you know, the summary of how we got here, why we're, why we're here, and what steps we're taking to mitigate these things that are sometimes problems that come from it, you know, just sort of in this project. And again, you know, I really appreciate that level of detail you bring to your presentations. And, you know, and it really is so informative in the sense that I find it to be very holistic. And even if you're not a part of the initial discussions, what you do is you tell why we're here, what we're hoping to do, where we are, and what the possible outcomes may be. And the the great thing about taking that approach that you do, it really doesn't bring any false hope. But what you really do instill is this opportunity for positive change that we're looking to do that enhances the quality of life. This is another prime example of good work and what we were attempting to do to help not only our citizens be able to enjoy the area. not only our citizens be able to enjoy the area that we have, but also being very responsible environmentally, because, you know, there were issues with millfall and so many other things that come as a result of, um, human intervention, if I can say it that way, but I really do appreciate how you're addressing it in these things, but yet progressively moving us forward. So, you know, I, I think sometimes it's so important that we continue to remind, um, not just you and the mayor and the staff of how much we appreciate this effort, but also, you know, it really does speak to, uh, the need to, for the public to recognize just the thought that goes into these solutions, that it's not willy-nilly, that at the end of the day, the address is really attempting to make everyone, including environment, environment as best as we can, and so, you know, I just wanted to, uh, again, say how much I appreciate that, and I'm very much in support of this.
Thank you, Ms. Young.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
I'm also very much in support of this, I appreciate the fact that there is a plan for ADA access, I think when we're looking at really redoing, uh, prime spots in Anacortis like that Heart Lake parking lot, it's just so important to include that, so thank you very much for that. I understand this is a super competitive grant process, so good luck-
Thank you.
-as you, as you go forth on that, um, and then, uh, I did notice that there was a restroom on there, is that part of the plan, too? I know that's not the exact map plan, but-
Right, right, so we, uh, those restrooms are probably over fifty years old, or, I mean, pit toilets, so, our goal would be to try to update those to newer varieties that, um, literally are bomb-proof, that we could put in there and serve the public, so that's always our goal.
Excellent.
And just to also water quality issues, we wanna make sure that we're doing it to today's standards, if we're doing all the work we're doing below, we might as well try to focus on that, and see what kind of funds we can raise as well.
And then if it does get approved, there'll be an opportunity where public can comment and come offer their suggestions and-
Right, absolutely, thank you, yeah, so there'd be an informal process that we would do in parks, then a formal process we'd do through the permitting process as well.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Mayor Miller. Mr. McDougal.
Also very much in support, so thank you, Mr. Lunsford. Just a very quick question on the Conservation Easement interest, we can use that, that interest can be used for projects like this, or potentially like, you know, expanding the forest lands as well, like if a tract were to come up for sale or something like that, correct?
Absolutely, yeah, so there's forest land specific, um, and so that, they are, they, the quarry fund, the revenue from quarry fund, and the CEP interest earnings, and so, they're forest land specific, but within the forest lands, you have, you, you as council have leeway, how you'd like to prepare that through the mayor's budget process, correct?
Okay, yeah, thank you, and, and the interest itself, is that basically a fairly regular annual, like, dollar figure? Like, does it take us twenty years to build up to this, or?
It's so, it's so dependent on the interest earnings, you know, we have to invest more conservatively than others do in not, that aren't bound by government regulations and rules to protect the, the money that's there, so, I think we're doing, Mr. Hogan is pleased, when Mr. Hogan is pleased, you know it's good news, so, currently, um, but we just are able to, because of the donations of the community, I think we're at two point one million in the endowment, and so the interest earnings on that, you know, so whether they're at three, three and a half, four now, I'm not sure, I'd have to ask Mr. Hogan.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, seems like a lot of support for the resolution, so, looking for the official support.
Mayor Miller.
All right. Uh, Ms. Hubick.
Yep.
Thank you, um, make a motion to approve the authorizing resolution to allow the grant application to proceed.
Second.
A motion by Ms., Ms. Hubick, a second by Mr. Young to approve resolution thirty-one sixty, any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, vote please.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next up is item six B, amendment to access agreement between the City of Anacortis and the Port of Anacortis, is a discussion item and possible action. Mr. Rayum's already here.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Andy Rayum, uh, Public Works Director. Before you, is an amendment to the reciprocal access agreement between the Port of Anacortis and the City of Anacortis for sediment sampling and analysis of contaminants before and after the dredging and install of the wastewater outfall pipe. The amendment changes the terms of the agreement, I'm sorry, the amendment does three things, number one, it changes the terms of the agreement to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six is the expiration, it sets the effective date to, to be when both, uh, the city council and the port commissioners approve the amendment, and the last part is it changes the city supervisor of the agreement to me from the former Public Works Director. There are no other changes, uh, that are being made to the original agreement by this amendment. That's what I have.
Pretty straightforward, and I know no one likes going out to twenty twenty-six, but we learned our lesson, so, that's-
We were a little ambitious the first time, so we're-
All right, council, any questions for Mr. Rayum?
Mayor Miller.
Uh, Ms. Moulton.
Just a brief one, um, I noticed one of the contacts is Chief Small, and I don't know if any of the other contacts need to be updated on the form, I'm sure the requisite people know who they are or whatever, but I don't know, I just noticed that, that's it, otherwise, looks great.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
The, uh, the amendment also notes that, uh, if there needs to be a notice sent from the port to the city, or the city to the port, it can be sent by overnight air courier. Uh, so, I, I feel like some of the text is boilerplate that we can just kinda work around, and doesn't, doesn't need to go back for further amendments, um, so I'd move approval as presented.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Mr. Fantini to approve the amendment to the access agreement, uh, as presented, any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thanks, uh, next up is six C, this is, uh, ordinance four zero eight three, amending the Anacortis Municipal Code, chapter ten dot twelve, parking, this is a discussion item with possible action, and Mr. Rayum is still here, and he's ready to go.
Uh, so, staff from the Police Department, Public Works, and a, and traffic engineer from Lockner's, uh, Lockner and Associates, met to discuss the requests for safety and parking improvements on May sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. The recommendations from the staff meeting were provided to the Public Works Committee slash Traffic Safety Committee during, uh, two Public Works Committee meetings in May. On June third, Public Works sent the full council the recommendations via email that were reviewed by the committee. Uh, this ordinance addresses the changes to Anacortis Municipal Code ten point twelve that were recommended to address parking concerns. Uh, I'm gonna go through the, each of the amendments here in the slideshow, just so you can see them from the public. So, here's the, here's the list of changes, I won't read the list, 'cause we're gonna go through each one, but, a few of them. Uh, the first one is twentieth street between I and J Avenue to the north, there is the high school, uh, the, the request was remove road segment, uh, from the municipal code, making the road segment, uh, designated as residential parking and not time-limited, it was originally time-limited for bus drop-offs, um, the current code conflicts with the, uh, municipal code, the, the road segment is detailed twice in the code, so staff recommends removing from the code section, uh, in one table and leave it in the other table, so it's residential parking area, uh, the staff has spoken, we have spoken with, uh, Anacortis School District, and they agree there is no need for the further fifteen-minute parking area, uh, next to the school.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Oh, I would just quibble it, it doesn't actually conflict, uh, there are two provisions that apply, but guests can still park in a residential parking area, they're just limited to an hour, and this makes it limited to fifteen minutes, but, um, concur with the deletion, if, there's no need for the fifteen-minute limitation, then let's get rid of it.
Okay, the next one is Flounder Bay Lane, uh, cars parking with driver's side tires against the curb instead of passenger side, uh, the, the request, they had no real specific request, so we, uh, thought about the idea, and what we'd like to do, staff recommends making Flounder Bay a one-way street going southeast, um, it doesn't require a code amendment, but we wanted to, uh, list it out in here, just so you guys are aware that we're gonna give this a go and see how it goes, uh, we're hoping that'll help, especially with the development of those lots, so that each one of those numbers is gonna be a single-family residence, so, it's gonna get a little more congested than less congested as we move forward.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Hi, um, there is a code chapter on one-way streets, uh, I imagine that we have more one-way streets than are described in the code chapter, but maybe we should take a look at that and either add this one to the list, or maybe delete the chapter and provide authority to make streets one-way separately.
Uh, we didn't see that in the, is it in ten point twelve?
Ten point eighteen. One-way only traffic, ten eighteen.
Ten eighteen, okay. Yeah, we could look at that. Uh, thirtieth street between Q and R Avenue, uh, request is no parking on thirtieth street west of thirtieth street roundabout, uh, the road is very narrow and makes vehicles have to stop to allow the other cars coming the other way to, to proceed, uh, staff recommend, recommends adding the south side of thirtieth street between Q and R Avenue to the code section for parking prohibited by street segment.
Good, council member.
Well, Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
So, is that, that's where it goes to the roundabout, correct?
Yes.
So, this isn't, and there is, I mean, they've got ditches that are exposed, I mean, I understand the no parking, it probably makes sense, but it still goes to the complete streets that we must get done, because we have impacted this block so much from this roundabout, um, yeah, I just wanna put that out there again.
Yeah, we do have in the, we have a ninety percent design for the, this improvement, so it's, uh, part of the capital facilities plan discussion that is coming, I looked at the calendar, I don't remember which day it first comes to council, I think it's in October.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Uh, Ms. Cleland McGrath, would you explain that, say it one more time, and explain, I, I missed something about what you were intending with that, just to make sure I'm clear.
Sure, um, so on R Avenue where the new roundabout at thirtieth is, it used to be you could go, um, down M Avenue, take a left on thirty-second, onto R, right, go north on R, and now because you can't do it, separated, um, the traffic, when you are going, oh, east on M, and you want to go north on R, you'll have to take a, kind of a extra couple turns onto thirtieth to then get onto the roundabout, right? And so, um, one of the concerns we had, when I think when we approved, finally approved the R Avenue roundabout, was the fact that we needed to make sure to, um, because Q Avenue and thirtieth are impacted by, um, the number of cars now going through a really residential area, um, that they need to have sidewalks, and they, when we put in sidewalks, we probably need to get rid of the exposed ditches, um, which is not safe, but also is a detriment to the neighboring properties, right? And we've got multifamily properties there, and, and probably will continue to see an increase in density, so they deserve to have, um, safe, um, parking and safe sidewalks.
Thank you, I mean, that was really clear, and I really appreciate it, thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Uh, I know we talked about this one in the Public Works Committee, but can you refresh my recollection as to why we would prohibit parking on the south side versus the north side?
I can't, I, I don't recall what, why, we, we did pick it intentionally, I, I just don't remember why.
I, I'm looking at the aerial photo, and there are six cars parked on the south side in the photo, and the north side, you can even see it here on this map, is the side that has that jog, um, so I, I was really hoping, uh, that you remembered why we chose the south side, 'cause it, it seems to me like the north side makes more sense.
Is the north side where that big ditch is?
No.
Okay.
I also think it's on the south, and yet, in the aerial photo between Q and R, there's like six cars parked there, so evidently they're making it happen, and it seems like the center line of the road, um, allows for parking on the south side and not on the north side, because the north side has that jog there, where it-
Then-
There's less pavement on the north side of the road, so it's just, that one I'm a little confused about.
Any of the other committee members might remember what the, okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't remember, we, we did pick it intentionally, but-
All right, well, we can, uh, we can make, put a note on this one and keep going.
Yeah, we could-
You have a shadow.
Oh, there we go, there's backup. But the ditch is on the south side, right, so that's why we wanted to prevent parking on that side.
Okay, and is, uh, there are no center line stripes, so people will just naturally navigate over to the north side? Okay, and this is, will be temporary, 'cause we will eventually get the street improved.
Yeah, yeah, we have a, pretty close to full design, so.
Although not full budget.
It just wasn't in the CFP, so-
Yeah.
-it needs to be added to the CFP.
Yeah.
Okay, next one. So, twentieth street between Commercial and Q Avenue, uh, the request was the street is wide enough to allow for parking on one side of the street, adjacent business owners' residents are in favor of allowing parking, uh, currently, the parking prohibited by street segment, uh, is, parking's not allowed on twentieth street between Commercial and Q Avenue, the staff recommends, uh, amending the code and allow parking on the north side of twentieth street across from nine oh nine twentieth street and east to Q Avenue, it's not the full segment, but most of it. And I do remember that one had an impediment, that's why it's truncated to that address. We good? Okay. Uh, diagonal parking, uh, the request is to change, uh, the code to allow diagonal parking on the south side of fifth, sixth, and seventh streets from O Avenue to R Avenue, uh, cars currently are parking diagonally on the south side of the street, um, the problem is they park diagonally differently because there's no striping, and so, uh, it would be good and actually increase the amount of parking we have there if we actually striped it, so people knew where to, where to park their car diagonally. Uh, staff recommends changing the code to allow diagonal parking on the south side of fifth, sixth, and seventh, uh, to make this happen, and then we can stripe it. Reasonable, okay. Uh, another diagonal parking, uh, the request is to change the code to say diagonal parking on the south side of Third Street from Commercial to Q Avenue, uh, not from O Avenue, uh, currently, Third Street from O Avenue to Commercial Avenue is standard parallel parking, um, the staff recommends the, uh, to change the code to say diagonal parking on the south side of Third Street from Commercial Avenue to Q Avenue, uh, and not from O Avenue.
Mayor.
Mr. Young.
I wanna be clear, um, um, Mr. Rayum, we're not talking about backing in, just, you know, that's a sensitive subject, so I just wanted to be clear-
It is sensitive, yeah.
...that you would emphasize it just a little bit, that was a little tongue-in-cheek, but, you know, just no more of that.
Not in the back-end diagonal section.
Okay, good, thank you, Andy.
Yeah. Good, keep going, oh, that's it.
So, before I let council have a discussion, any members of the public, especially if you're in that neighborhood, just to address the council? All right, council, over to you all.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you, can, can you go back to the most, the, the last one? 'Cause I'm confused, because we're talking about Commercial to Q, not from O, but, or aren't we looking at O to Commercial?
That's O to Commercial.
That's, that's-
I, I think, uh, Mr. Walters requested to speak, I think with some clarification, and back to Ms. Moulton.
Yeah, this, this item doesn't add diagonal parking, it deletes diagonal parking. That, the, on the south side, the code currently says you have to park diagonally between O and all the way to Q, clearly people aren't parking diagonally there, so it's correcting.
Ms. Moulton, to that-
We have-
I need to think this, I'm sure it makes sense, but I just still don't-
Sidney, Sidney Neal's here to handle this, so she can, she can speak to it.
All right, Ms. Neal.
Hi, Mayor and Council, so yes, currently the code states from O to Q, and we are wanting to change it from Commercial to Q, because it doesn't currently accurately reflect the code. This is parallel parking and it's striped accordingly, even though the code says diagonal, so we're wanting to just amend it from Commercial- So we're wanting to just amend it from Commercial over and not allow O to have diagonal since it's marked for parallel.
Thank you. Got it.
Mr. Walters.
At the risk of cutting off a significant debate here about this ordinance, I would propose that we approve it as presented.
And before you make that motion, we need to, yeah, we, I'll need you to, to make that motion as well, if you want to do that.
Well, I guess I would entertain, I guess, first of all, discussion about whether or not we need to have a second read. And I actually would be in favor of having a second read, unless there's any urgency associated with any of these.
There's no real big urgency, we just figured it would be a.
So we could do it in two weeks.
We could do two, yeah. We are striping in the area, but that doesn't mean we can, we can't come back, so.
Yeah, actually stripe it without the code, that's awesome.
Oh, no, we're not going to stripe it until the code passes.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
I think all of the, great to do a second read. I'm always in favor of second reads, just especially when it's not a time-sensitive issue. But just a question on, on kind of process, you had sent out, or the department sent out the email about this and several other items. I noticed that all of these are kind of concentrated in, in one part of town. Is this kind of like a phase one to parking and traffic safety adjustments and expecting more to come forth? So this isn't just these ones, we'll see some of the other ones that were on that list as well coming forward eventually, or?
So I believe these are all the ones that required code amendments that were in that memo. Well, these are the ones that required code amendments that are in the memo. The other ones were either police, you know, enforcing the parking, and the other one was just things that we could do without requesting council to approve the code amendments.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, that, just a clarification, too. These, this is the entire list. We don't have like zones that we're going through. This was everything we got for this one set.
All right, so we'll plan on bringing it back on the 22nd, so if there are any questions that come up with relation to this or how the Traffic Safety slash Public Works Committee is working out, then it'd be a good time to, to ask those questions.
Yeah, we're always looking for feedback. We're trying a new thing here, so if you like it or don't like it, do let us know.
We've been adjusting that committee from, for at least 10 years, so we're trying to get it right. Mr. Young.
Yeah, no, I just really wanted to again comment that, you know, this process we went through in discussing it, it's been a little fluid in trying to figure out the best ways to do things such that all of the issues are being addressed. And, you know, what I appreciate about it is that we came through this discussion in our committee and, and, you know, it was just, I thought, successful, such that when we come to council, you know, we just begin to explain it for the rest of council to be able to vote their conscience about what they thought and to ask those additional questions. But, you know, I really wanted to commend you and the staff for the work that you put in and then in compiling it so succinctly such that it is understandable, first of all, but then able to extrapolate whether or not this is something we want to do or not, or, you know, hear the opinions of the rest of the council and the public. So again, thank you.[1792.03]